Okay. Good evening, everyone. We are on the record. This is a regular meeting of the Jersey City Municipal Council. Today is Wednesday, the 26th day of February, 2020. We had a scheduled 6:00 PM start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 6:03 PM. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this meeting? Councilperson Ridley is not here. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Here.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Yeah.
Councilperson Solomon, not here. Councilperson Robinson is not here yet. Councilperson Lavaro is not here yet. Councilperson Rivera. And Council President Waterman.
Here.
We have five members in attendance at 6:03 PM. May we kindly rise for a moment of silence, please?
Felix Belto Estol Casilag. K-A-S-I-L-A-G.
Thank you so much. Kindly remain standing as we salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. On behalf of Council President Waterman, in accordance with the New Jersey Public Laws of 1975, Chapter 231, the Open Public Meetings Act, also known as the Sunshine Law, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by the posting on the bulletin board of the first floor of City Hall, the annual notice, which is the schedule of meetings and caucuses of the municipal council for the calendar year 2020, and filed in the office of the city clerk on Wednesday, December 18th, 2019. In addition, at the time of its preparation, the agenda of this meeting was similarly disseminated on Thursday, February 20th, 2020, at 4:00 PM, to the municipal council, mayor, business administrator, corporation council, and the local newspapers, and posted on the city's website. So I can certify as to our total compliance with the Sunshine Law. Council members, I know I had my moment at the last council meeting, but I'm just going to take a little time out to have another moment. The mayor has graced his presence in the council chambers and was kind enough to agree to swear me in officially as the new city clerk and the new local registrar for the city of Jersey City. So I would like to invite my family up to hold the Bible and surround me and for your support. Without you guys, I wouldn't be able to do this.
Before we do this, I don't know if the council members want to say anything before we officially swear him in.
We did a list on.
Yeah, that's right. Once is enough for the guy, right?
No, he's.
More than enough.
But we know you have to run, so.
I do want to take a second and just say congratulations to Sean and for the residents to realize that this is actually a big moment. We haven't had a swearing-in of a city clerk in more than three decades. As these are big shoes to fill. Robert Byrne was here for 30-plus years and probably regarded as the best clerk in the state of New Jersey. But always by his side was Sean and doing a lot of the work that made everything possible in that office to move forward. The clerk's office is one of the most important offices in City Hall. It is the front line of providing information and resources to residents, whether it's something as basic as a marriage license or it's something complicated about understanding background in the last 10 years of certain amount of data that happened in the building department. And that all runs through Sean's office. And in many ways, the sentiment of the public towards City Hall is a reflection on how the clerk's office deals with people. Because if they're customer service focused and people have a good experience, they generally have a positive regard for all of us. So we're thankful for the work that Sean has done. And we're thankful for his family. I mean, there is probably no bigger cheerleader for Jersey City than Sean Gallagher, even though he moved to Bayonne. But, uh, but, uh... But that said, we couldn't be more proud of you. And we look forward to seeing you here for 30-plus years as well. So congratulations.
Thank you so much, mayor. That was very kind of you. Thank you.
Stay here first, and later, after that. You guys are straight, okay? With some subtitles or... Or straight?
Repeat after me. I, Sean J. Gallagher.
Aye. Sean J. Gallagher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority.
Amanda.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
As the city clerk.
As the city clerk.
Of the city of Jersey City.
Of the city of Jersey City.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Congratulations. I, Sean J. Gallagher.
I, Sean J. Gallagher.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
And the Constitution of the state of New Jersey.
That I will bear true faith.
And that I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
And to the government established.
And to the governments established.
In the United States.
In the United States.
And in this state.
And in this state.
Under the authority of the people.
Under the authority of the people.
And that I will faithfully.
And that I will faithfully.
Impartially.
Impartially.
And justly.
And justly.
Perform all the duties.
Perform all the duties.
As the local registrar.
As the local registrar.
Of the city of Jersey City.
Of the city of Jersey City.
According to the best of my ability.
According to the best of my ability.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Hold on, hold on. Call council.
Yeah. Congratulations. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, man. Thank you. Sorry. It's okay. Thank you.
I'd just like to thank the mayor again for taking the time out of his busy schedule to come in and swear me in. Means a lot to me. Thank you so much, mayor. All right. And again, thanks to my family, my wife, beautiful wife Laura, my son Sean, his girlfriend Sam, my brother Bob, my sister-in-law Marcy. I hope I didn't miss any... And my good friend of the family, Joel, who came right from work. I really appreciate you guys coming out and supporting me. And without your support, I don't know where I'd be. But again, thanks so much. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to do that. Thank you so much.
Sean.
Yes. Okay. So for the record, I'm going to mark Councilperson Solomon present at 6:13 PM. And Councilperson Lavaro at 6:13 PM. So we do now have seven members in attendance at 6:13. All right. Council members, before we move on, I need a motion to add item 1031, which is Resolution 20183, authorizing the closed session for the next.
Motion.
Court.
Second.
There you go. All right. So we have a motion by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Prinzieri, to add item 1031 to the agenda. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Excuse me. Councilperson Lavaro. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
We have a 7-0 vote to add item 1031, Resolution 20-183. Okay. Onto our regular scheduled business. Our first reading ordinances. Item 3.1 was withdrawn, so I'm going to move on to item 3.2, City Ordinance 20-024. An ordinance supplementing Chapter 151, Drug-Free School and Park Zones, Article 1 of the Jersey City Municipal Code. Item 3.3 was withdrawn. Item 3.4, City Ordinance 20-026. An ordinance vacating 17th Street pursuant to Jersey Avenue Park Redevelopment Plan. Item 3.5, City Ordinance 20-027. An ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to Chapter 304, Taxation, Article 5, Hotel Occupancy Tax and Hotel Labor Peace to Include transient accommodations. Item 3.6, City Ordinance 20-028. An ordinance of the Jersey City, of the city of Jersey City, amending Chapter 160, Fees and Charges, Section 160, Fees, Fee Schedule Established, Increasing the Fee for Registration of Forclosed Properties. Council members, on items 3.1 to 3.6, with the exception of 3.1 and 3.3, which has been withdrawn, Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Bajiano.
I'll say aye for now. I may have a change in the next meeting.
Councilperson Young.
Aye for introduction.
Councilperson Solomon.
Just really, BA and law for 3.4. I'm happy to introduce it, but can we make second reading, not the next meeting, but two meetings? So I have time to meet with the JCRNA to just discuss? Because there's a couple of other requirements in the redevelopment plan that I want to go over before we finalize this.
That's right.
Yeah, that works. We also already spoke to the council representing this development, and they are okay with that.
Okay, great.
So yeah, that's fine.
Very great. With that, aye for introduction.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Just a couple of comments before I cast my vote. On 3.2, this does not address... But I raised this in caucus and just for the record, told the record that I'll be providing information to the law department about changing the distance around drug-free zones. I think it's for medical marijuana purposes. Do have some legislation copies of legislation that was done in another municipality that I see them with the law department on that. Glad to see 3.5 coming in. This provides the hotel tax for short-term rentals, Airbnb, and so that we'll be able to tax them according to the state legislation. Had brought this to the administration's attention back in September, October of last year, prior to the referendum. So I'm glad to see that it's moving forward. I just asked for the BA. I know you said that they stopped paying via the voluntary agreement as of September. If I could get a calculation or a report of the current receipts from the hotel tax as it pertains to short-term rentals, specifically, I'm sorry, from the voluntary agreement with the short-term rentals with Airbnb for the year 2019, as well as since its inception from year to year.
Yeah. So apologies, I did not include that in the email that I sent council this morning, but I do have that information. I'll send it right now. Also, I can say that Airbnb stopped remitting as of September of this year. They verbally notified us that they would no longer be adhering to the agreement. We're still finalizing the official end to that agreement, though.
Okay. And then lastly, on 3.6, I'm going to end up abstaining on this. And I want to have further conversations because it was raised, the idea that the county's chair of this agreement... I'd like to explore this more and just make sure that this is the best decision for the city of Jersey City ultimately. So aye for introduction on all except 3.6, which I'm going to abstain on pending further discussion.
Okay. Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
Council President Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
Okay. So item 3.2 is approved 7-0. Item 3.4 is approved 7-0. Item 3.5 is approved 7-0. And item 3.6 is introduced 6-1, with Councilperson Lavaro abstaining. 6-0-1, excuse me. 6-0-1.
Sean.
Yes.
Solomon Robinson just arrived.
Okay. 6-0-1. So let me mark him present. Thank you for that. Councilperson Robinson is marked present at 6:19 PM. And now we have eight members present. Before we move on, I would just like to take a motion to direct yours truly to advertise City Ordinance 20-026, which is the ordinance, item number 3.4, an ordinance vacating 17th Street pursuant to Jersey Avenue Park Redevelopment Plan as a second reading ordinance for the second meeting in March, which...
Motion.
I have a motion made by Councilperson Rivera.
Second.
Second by Councilperson Prinzieri. I'll get you that date in a second. On a motion to direct the city clerk to advertise City Ordinance 20-026 for a second reading on March... On March 25th, right? March 25th is the next council meeting. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
I have an 8-0 vote on the motion, with Councilperson Ridley absent. Okay. Before we move on to the second readings, Councilperson Robinson, would you like to cast your vote on the first reading ordinances?
Aye for introduction.
Perfect. That's an easy one. All right. So that changes the recap to 8-0, with the exception of items 3.1 and 3.3, which have been withdrawn. And 3.6 is now going to be 7-0-1, with Councilperson Lavaro abstaining. All right. Now we can move on to our second reading ordinances. First second reading ordinance is item 4.1, City Ordinance 20-010. An ordinance amending Chapter 218, Multiple Dwellings, Article 1, Security Service and Security Cameras, to mandate that multiple dwellings consisting of 75 or more units and which are dedicated to senior citizen housing or for housing for the disabled must furnish onsite security personnel 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
We need to make some amendments to this at the request of the housing authority, and we may not need to do the hearing just because it's going to be a substantial change. Right?
No, she's up to speak.
Well, I was actually... I think we should conduct the hearing because we're going to wind up re-advertising for another public hearing.
Okay. Yeah. Yeah. It's up to the council.
Go ahead, Laverne.
Laverne, go ahead.
Laverne, you can...
I just want to comment that I think it's a very, very overdue... Excuse me, I just came from a meeting. Overdue ordinance, because I deal with... I'm a senior, and I deal with a lot of seniors. I bring seniors home at night from work and council meetings and whatever, and there's nobody outside their buildings. Like, I know one on Bergen and Forests. There's a guy there on the weekends, but now we will have somebody there every night and with shooting going on in different areas where seniors live. I think this is one of the greatest things you guys can do, and I thank you for it.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any other member wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Prinzieri, to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-010. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0, with Councilperson Ridley absent. Council members, I believe there's a motion to amend Ordinance 20-010. We're changing the security guard definition to security attendant. Just make sure I'm doing this right, and you interrupt me if I'm not. And changing the effective date to May 1st. And to direct the city clerk to re-advertise the ordinance for a public hearing on March 11th, 2020.
That's correct.
So I have that compound motion. May I have a motion?
Motion, second.
So we have a motion by Councilperson Prinzieri, seconded by Councilperson Rivera. On the motion, Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano. Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Just a question for the law department. So, security attendant, what's the definition of that? Because Councilperson Ridley, who wasn't here, has raised the issue at the caucus about... Does that mean that one of this... If I can just...
Okay, can I?
I can just...
Go ahead.
Raise the question as to whether or not one of the senior residents being put at the front desk, would that would qualify as a security attendant? In my estimation, that wouldn't, but I'd like to know what the official definition is.
No, the intent of the amendment is to not require an armed security guard, but to have someone who works there serving as a security attendant. But it would not be one of the residents who would be...
What's the definition? Do we have a definition for security attendant?
There's no specific legal definition. We can include one if you would like to make sure that... To address your concern, that wouldn't be one of the residents. Be one of the employees, just not somebody who happened to be armed as a qualified security guard.
Yeah, I think it'd be best if we could put the definition so there's no loopholes here.
Sure, we can absolutely do that.
With that, I'll vote aye for introduction. I'm sorry, yeah.
It's aye on the motion.
Aye on the motion.
Councilperson Rivera.
So, Nick, so with respect to that, can we be specific and say that no residents can do it? Or we could just do a general definition of like a attendant? Because I'm thinking that if we do any type of definition like that, they're still going to put a resident there.
You know what, actually? Yeah, go ahead. Yeah, okay.
What are your thoughts on that?
We can make it as specific or as broad as you would like. I think, like, hearing from the council is your concern, is you do not want a resident being tasked with that responsibility. That can be included in the definition. Also included in the definition, obviously, there would not have to be a certified security guard. It could be an employee serving with the security function at the desk, doing the monitoring function.
Correct.
I think the monitoring function is really the purpose of what the ordinance is.
Right.
So we can include that definition. Well, we can put it in the whereas clauses as well.
Okay. All right. With that, I vote aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye for introduction.
So I have an 8-0 vote on the motion to amend the ordinance and for re-advertising on March 11, 2020. Nick, if you wouldn't mind, I'm going to need the ordinance like tomorrow because I have to advertise it. I'm probably going to have to advertise this one in full. So I'm going to need that, all those changes in there, if you don't mind. I don't mean to put any pressure on you. Very good. Very good. And before I continue, I just wanted to thank my assistant, Amanda Bransky, for always helping me out and having her family come. Her son is... Definitely does not want to be here. He loves his mother, but he definitely wants his mother home and not in work. So I'm going to relieve Amanda and let her go. And I thank you so much for the bottom of my heart, you and your son and George. Really appreciate it.
Amen.
Thank you. All right. Onto our next second reading ordinance. This is an ordinance, item number 4.2, City Ordinance 20-013. An ordinance authorizing the imposition of a deed, notice on property known as Block 11603, Lot 41, also known as First Street Park, that is owned by the A Condominium Association and dedicated to the city of Jersey City by a deed of easement as a public park. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Prinzieri, to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-013. Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries 8-0. For final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 20-013, Councilperson Prinzieri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Young.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City Ordinance 20-013 is adopted 8-0, with Councilperson Ridley absent. Onto item 4.3, City Ordinance 20-014. An ordinance of the Municipal Council of the City of Jersey City adopting amendments to the land use map of the Liberty Harbor Redevelopment Plan. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Prinzieri. On the motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-014, On the motion to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty dash zero one four, Councilperson Prinzery.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robertson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero to close a public hearing. For final consideration and adoption of city ordinance twenty dash zero one four, Councilperson Prinzery.
So, um, to the BA, um, was there any further conversation with Sam Pesson and Friends of Liberty State Park?
Matt Ward, the planner who was at the meeting, reached out to Friends of Liberty State Park, but they did not want to meet further about it. So, uh, it's up to the council at this point if you wanna hold off on this and try and get another meeting or, or you wanna move forward.
They didn't want to talk about it, so just move forward.
Yeah, they didn't want to meet.
Yeah. Right.
They had a, yeah, they had a following.
If you guys are gonna speak, you have to speak into the mic because then the court reporter can't hear you.
I thought it was suggested at the caucus to get a couple of council members together with, with Sam and others.
He couldn't meet, Sam couldn't meet.
Could not meet.
Could not meet.
Meaning he didn't have the availability or he didn't refuse to meet?
Availability at the time.
Okay. So did he offer another alternative date or time or?
No, he didn't.
Did he ask?
No, but not based on email.
Oh, based on emails, okay.
Did you, did, did we read these emails?
I, I didn't read the email. I don't know.
So, uh, I'm taking a vote on final consideration adoption of city ordinance.
Let's put it to a vote.
Twenty dash zero one four, Councilperson Prinzery.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
No.
Councilperson Robinson.
One second.
Sure.
I was, I was briefly just looking over the email, um, and I, I didn't really get a chance to talk to Sam either about this and I, I know it's just the factory, um, just adding the, the factory into the zone and I, I mean, I really wish we and the city would have had a chance to sit down and talk to Sam about this, um, and the Friends of Liberty State Park. I really don't believe that it's a hindrance. It's not taking away land from the park and the use from the park, so I'm, I'm gonna vote aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
I'll vote no.
Councilperson Rivera.
I vote aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City ordinance twenty dash zero one four is approved six two with Councilperson Ridley absent. Onto our next second reading ordinance, item four point four, city ordinance twenty dash zero one five. An ordinance of the municipal council of the city of Jersey City adopting amendments to create the sewer easement heights bonus in the Morris Canal redevelopment plan. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard? June?
Hi, good evening. I'm just in time.
Perfect timing, June.
State your name, June.
June Jones, Morris Canal.
Put it up closer to you, June.
June Jones, Morris Canal, CDC. I, um, saw this and, um, by surprise, I just wanted to state for the record that this amendment, we did not have a chance to review. And normally, when we have amendments for the Morris Canal redevelopment plan, they come before the community. So we didn't have a chance to discuss it. I'm not actually sure exactly what this is doing. It looks like there's some kind of bonus of some sort and some kind of change in height density. So, can't speak intelligently on it because we haven't had a chance to talk it out and, um, understand exactly what this amendment does. But I would say for the record that when we do have amendments, we are supposed to bring them before the community, give us a chance to discuss it and see if it makes sense or if there's any adverse conditions that we should be discussing. So, as it is, it's in violation of our Morris Canal redevelopment plan.
BA, could you, um, answer and explain what this, um, ordinance is about, please? Or Nick, either one?
June, I, I, I'm sorry, I, I text you a little while ago. I was running around, I seen you earlier and I did text you, I, I tried to text you what was going on here. I mean, if you look at your texts, I guess the BA, because what's going on is, it's, uh, the MUA, they have a main, a sewer main that runs right underneath the property. So the property, this was already approved about a year ago and?
The project.
The project was already approved and what happened is they're not getting any extra units. They're getting height because the building is going from this, because the sewer is running right up underneath, uh, the eastern port, part of the, the project and instead of having this, they're gonna have this because of the, the sewer line itself that runs underneath it and it runs also underneath the parking lot at, uh, the Liberty States, uh, Liberty State Science Center.
I mean, I kinda, I kinda, um, got a, a gist of it, but it's not actually clear and the clarity is not just for me, the clarity is for the community. So whenever we have changes that requires amendments to the redevelopment plan, there's a process that has to happen and that process didn't happen. And it is, in regards to the heights, um, it only talks about maximum. It, I, I see where it says the dwellings will stay the same, but the maximum height could be as high as, is it two hundred and eighty-five feet? Which, in essence, not knowing how high that is, could be twenty-six stories. Don't know. So I just think that in all fairness, we should evaluate, see exactly what the amendment is saying is going to happen at the project site so that we can all be educatedly informed to make a decision if, in fact, it has to happen. I understand the sewage thing, you know, and in this case, it talks about, this language, um, is something I've never seen before when it talks about sewer bonus, sewer height bonus. We have a developer that's doing a project who has to put in street grids, who has to put in sewage and they're paying seventy, I think, a necessary of seven hundred thousand dollars. So I don't know if we talking about apples and apples and oranges and oranges, but when we talk about changes that are required, who gets the bonus and who pays and why the difference? I think it makes a difference.
So, like you said, it, it is a height bonus and the reason is that we did not want to cover the sewer because if we covered the sewer, if the sewer main would break, then it would be a disaster trying to, you know, get that fixed up underneath the building. So what we did was made green space underneath the building. I didn't know that the developer or the planning board or whoever else didn't talk to Morris Canal.
Yeah, and, and that's the other thing, the process, because before it gets here, it goes to, before the planning board and those are checkboxes that has to be checked off before we even get to you. So I'm just saying that.
Excuse me, you know what, June?
Yeah.
The developer is here, right? Is, okay, this is what we can do so we can move along here. June, you can go over and speak to them and see, do they satisfy your question and then we can bring this back. Is that okay, clerk? The only reason why I'm saying that because?
As a president, it's not, it's not, I'm making a statement, okay? It is not my judgment to make a, a decision for my community.
But I want you to understand what it is.
There's an ordinance in place, there's a process in place. And what I'm saying is that we should be following the process.
Yeah, I wanna make sure you understand this before we even vote on it, that's why. So they're over on the side here, we can, um, come back to this one, okay? So we can move forward.
Well, we can just continue to hold the public hearing.
Okay.
All right, and then, um, we can defer the vote to final adoption until, um, when you feel fit.
I don't know.
Council President. So this is still a public hearing on this ordinance and I seen Jean Daly.
Yes, hello, I'm Jean Daly, as you know. Um, I'm just gonna kinda piggyback on what, uh, the former speaker had said because one thing that continues to happen is lack of process and due process and particularly when it comes to informing the community. And I would like to know, for example, who sponsored this ordinance? I would like to know what type of outreach was put forth to the community because this seems to be a pattern which happens time and time and time again. And this, the public gets sucker punched, we find out about this a little late and then we have problems. And now it's at this point that you guys just pass it through or rubber stamp it.
Stay focused.
Stay focused and we not rubbing, stamping it.
Okay, okay. Well, one thing is clear, this people of Jersey City have a right to accurate information and without this accurate information, how are we or how are you supposed to make a decision which is in the best interest of the constituencies of the cit, constituents, excuse me, of the city? I hope some type of procedure is in place. I hope it wasn't violated. It seems like it might have been because how can you have the good faith of the constituents on your side? Because it seems to me that effectively, we learn not to trust you guys and it becomes a matter of trust. We don't trust you intrinsically because of these breakdowns in communications. And there needs to be some type of effort to up, um, the transparency that goes to the community. Um, I'm also hoping that the developer can speak on the record as to what this, um, variance is and the density, um, and what type of certification or verification do we have that the only way to do this or solve this problem is to go vertical upwards instead of going sideways? And also, what kind of precedent is this gonna set for the rest of the buildings in this community? Is now that gonna be the threshold and everyone's gonna say, oh, well, they did it, now I want it? Uh, I hope you can get some answers on that, thanks.
Thank you.
Motion. This, this is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard? And I have a motion by Councilperson Rivera. I have a second to close the public hearing. Council President Waterman, on the second, to close the public hearing on city ordinance twenty dash one, zero, one, five, Councilperson Prinzery.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero with Councilperson Ridley absent. We're gonna defer to vote on id, ordinance twenty dash zero one five, correct, Council President?
Yes.
So we're gonna move on to the next ordinance, which is item four point five, city ordinance twenty dash zero one six, an ordinance supplementing chapter three thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, article three, parking, standing and stopping. Section three thirty-two dash twenty-six, no parking, no, excuse me, no stopping or standing certain hours, repealing no stopping or standing on the north side of First Street at four electric charging stations. This is a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public wishing to be heard?
Hello, council members. My name is Vartan, Vartan Badalian. I'm corporate counsel, policy and business development for Greenspot.
I'm sorry, can, can you spell your name for me, please?
Uh, Vartan Badalian. V A R T A N.
T A N?
Yep.
And last name?
Badalian. B A D A L I A N.
B A D A?
L I A N.
L I A N. Thank you so much.
Uh, just here to show our support for this, uh, ordinance to be passed. We are the ones who are currently operating the stations, electric vehicle charging stations. Sorry. We are currently the ones operating the electric vehicle charging station program in Jersey City. The nineteen parking spaces that are electrified on First Street. Uh, we currently have a eight Tesla vehicle car sharing program that is operating within eight of those parking spots and we are here to show support for this ordinance to open up the last remaining two spots at the end of the program to add an additional two Tesla vehicles available for the public to rent at any given time during the day. Uh, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any other member of the public wishing to be heard? Jean Daly?
Yes, Jean Daly. Uh, I'm not, I can't quite picture where it is. I kind of have an idea, um, where, where it is, but, um, my question is if there already is, for example, um, permissible parking for regular residents to park in that area, when this electric start, charging station is implemented, do they have to have a give back? For example, do we have to find, um, spots that have to be given back to the community or taken from somewhere or they just get to take them and that's it?
There was a big favorable things was that. Actually, we give the parking space without charge. I think we charge a dollar a year. There was a really big favorable deal was and that they take a parking space street from the general public and give the private sector without any compensation. That was totally wrong. And then not only that, when they proved the first time, they installed the charging station without this city council approve. I'm gonna just make a keep on the record, you know what I'm saying? I was not happy that time, but unfortunately, which the council people proved that. But still, as I understand, they use a public street and they make money with one of the charging station, but they pay dollar a year. He's gotta be kidding.
That's disgusting, I'm sorry, but if that's the case, I, I'm appalled that these charging stations don't have to pay anything to the city. I think it's disgraceful and truthfully, I feel like pulling into one and parking there. But it's on, it's not fair to the regular citizens of Jersey Cities, or the residents, rather, who are now prohibited from using these spots and we have more tighter and tighter problems. Uh, very disappointed, thanks.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance. Any member of the public still wishing to be heard?
Motion.
Brian.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera. I didn't get the second. Who made the second?
Me.
Councilperson Bajiano.
Um, Sean, let me ask the BA, is there anything you wanna add to this?
Uh, yeah, yeah, I can give a little more background on this too. Um, so there are, uh, it's about eighteen angled parking spaces in this section of the street that are serviced by electric vehicle charging stations installed privately by the developer at no cost to the city. Uh, we can talk about the terms of that deal that, uh, as Councilman Yun mentioned, we've been working to sort of clean up and, and, and fix over the years. Um, but what we've also done for the community there is we haven't reserved all of those spots for electric vehicles only. We've reserved some of them for just regular community members in zone four there, uh, and some for electric vehicles only, until we noticed that the demand for the chargers reached a certain point where we would give more electric vehicle stations, uh, more stations for electric vehicle charging only. These four spots on the end were, uh, not reserved for electric vehicles because there was a loading zone that we thought was more active than it was at the time. Uh, that meant that most of the day was loading only, so you really couldn't use it for charging or anything. So, uh, as we've noticed that the demand for the electric vehicle charging stations has increased, uh, we thought the best way to move forward was to remove that loading zone and just make those electric vehicle only charging stations.
Thank you.
But based on what kind of fee they're gonna pay for?
That is, uh, a discussion that we've had over the years and, uh, I can't remember the numbers that we went through, but, uh, at this point, um, they've installed this public infrastructure, uh, at no cost to the city that's publicly available.
So BA?
Those spots are for the, open to the entire public, not just the?
The electric, yes, so any, right, any, any electric vehicle that wants to charge can do so there.
So, Council Mike Yun, take that one blocks of Kennedy Boulevard, install that the charging station, maybe dollar a year. In the meantime, cross street, the gas station, they pay for that. You know what I'm saying? So, how much is city government, it's a public entity, gonna be subsidized or are we waive the fee, certain entity? I think it's not fair, but you say you're gonna work in on it, make sure that?
So, so, this is probably a discussion separate from this ordinance, uh, but I will say that we are trying to install charging stations across the city and the cost of it is expensive. We have grants that we found that subsidize part of it, but there's still a big cost to the city. So if we wanna install electric vehicle charging station across the city and develop, and a developer wants to do it for us, that is, uh, a benefit enough to the city, we see.
So how many years do we give the lease for them?
Don't speak out, Jean, remember.
I, I don't, I can't remember the terms of that lease that we did, but that was, what, I, I don't, I can't remember the terms of that lease that we did, but that was, what, two or three years ago at least, right?
But we'll, we'll talk offline.
Yeah, we can, we can talk offline about it, if you want to make changes to that other ordinance, maybe 2017 or 16, yeah.
We think we can do a little more.
So I have a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-016 by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Councilperson Bajana, on the motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-016, Councilperson Prinzeri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
Stepped away.
Stepped away. Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. Motion carries seven zero, with Councilmembers Ridley and Robinson absent. Final consideration and adoption of City Ordinance 20-016, Councilperson Prinzeri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
No, we're losing enough parking spaces for people in the neighborhood, as it is, between bike lanes, between this and everything else, no.
Councilperson Yun.
You know, I'm favorable with electric vehicle, but when they, private sector use the public space, they should be paid decent price. So because of their reason, I'm gonna vote for no.
Councilperson Solomon. Councilperson Robinson, on City Ordinance 20-016.
He's not here.
He's here.
4.5.
Councilperson Lavaro. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman. City Ordinance 20-016 is approved six two, with Councilperson Ridley absent. On to our next second reading ordinance, item 4.6, City Ordinance 20-017, an ordinance supplementing Chapter 332, Vehicles and Traffic, Article 8, Permit Parking, Amending Section 33258, Parking Restrictions in Residential Zones, Extending Zone 10, Residential Permit Parking to Include Berging Avenue, Fulton Avenue to Stegman Street and Van Cliff Street, Fulton Avenue to Dwight Street. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, any member of the public wishing to be heard? Motion.
Second.
Motion made by Councilperson Rivera, seconded by Council President Waterman, on a motion to close the public hearing on City Ordinance 20-017, Councilperson Prinzeri.
Aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
I'm gonna vote aye for it, but um...
We're, we're closing the public hearing.
Oh, closing, all right, close, aye.
Councilperson Lavaro, to close the public hearing. Councilperson Lavaro, to close the public hearing. Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
Motion carries eight zero, with Councilperson Ridley absent, for final adoption, consideration and final adoption of City Ordinance 20-017, Councilperson Prinzeri.
17 or 16?
17.
We're on 4.6...
I was looking at the wrong column, aye.
Councilperson Bajana.
Aye.
Councilperson Yun.
Aye.
Councilperson Solomon.
Aye.
Councilperson Robinson.
I'm gonna vote aye, and I know this has been a long process, the process is still not over yet, we still have to figure out what we can do with Garfield Avenue, Ocean Avenue, and Martin Luther King, but I, I know the process has been going on for some years now. And I have a, the Bidwell Block Association that's calling me now, who wants to be included inside of Zone 10, it's two streets over, but they've been asking for the same amount of time, their application has been in, and I know there is an issue with, you know, parking, especially around the colleges and the light rail stations, so I'm gonna vote aye, but I know we still have some more work to do to try to, to figure this, this totally out. So, aye.
Councilperson Lavaro.
Aye.
Councilperson Rivera.
Aye.
And Council President Waterman.
Aye.
City Ordinance is adopted eight zero, with Councilperson Ridley absent. City Ordinance 20-017 is adopted eight zero, sorry.
Before we move forward, Council President, may I just make one comment about the preceding ordinance? Brief, I'll keep it brief, I promise you.
Okay.
All right? So I, I just wanted to clarify, because I needed to get some clarification myself on 4.5, the preceding ordinance about the electric charging engine. So those spaces, just to clarify, the spaces, that section of First Street, there's no parking permitted previously, right? And, and so what we did was, by repealing it and allowing for electric charging vehicle stations, we actually created four parking spots, and, but they're restricted to electric vehicle charging stations, as electric vehicle charging stations. So in fact, there's, there's four new spots created. I just wanted to make, make that clear, because I got a little bit confused there, like, a little bit, because of the conversation around this. But that's the case there, so I just want to put that on for the record, okay? Thank you.
Also, I will say that previously, historically on that street, it was parallel parking, and now that it's angled parking, we added spaces because of that as well.
Okay, I, so I want to be clear myself, being a resident there 55 years, there was parking there, and the fact that, we have to be clear here, you know, and it was, was not angled parking. I mean, I, I like the fact that, you know, this ordinance, you know, helps out the electric vehicles, unfortunately, some of those residents are parking on my block now, and it makes it difficult for us to find parking, but I wasn't gonna say anything, but just to be clear, there was parking on that block.
But just to be clear, the ordinance itself reads no stopping or standing, so there was not, so people may have been parking there, but they were illegally parking, that wasn't...
Okay, let's move on. We had enough...
It was. Just to be clear about that.
I stand corrected by former president.
Okay. On to our next, first, excuse me, second reading ordinance, item 4.7, City Ordinance 20-018, an ordinance amending Chapter A 350, Council Rules of Order, Rule, Article Number 18, Manner of Addressing City Council of the City, Jersey City Code, number one, to impose a three-minute limitation on all members of the public wishing to speak during both hearings and second reading ordinances, and during the public speaking portion of the meeting. And number two, to impose a five-minute limitation on all members of the public wishing to speak on the adoption of the budget and on any amendments to the budget. This is a public hearing on this ordinance, and can you state your name for the record, please?
Tricia Waiters.
And address.
Thank you.
Thank you, Council President and City Council. I came in on the very end last night of the caucus, and I just sat there and observed and took a few notes. I'm quite sure you all ran for City Council, so you are familiar with the Open Sunshine Public Meeting Act laws?
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's aware of that. So with that said, your bylaw is gonna supersede the sunshine meeting laws, because it's actually to protect members of the public, and this is what I'm, where I'm going with this. I go to all meetings, public hearings, down in Trenton, everywhere. So if you cut this, and you said, with the exceptions of the budget, and like, even up into like, this article I'm getting ready to read that arose today about the CFO with the firing here in City Hall, if an interesting topic come up like this, because when people read this tomorrow, I'm quite sure the next meeting will be standing room only, remember, it takes away from members of the public that can find and take allegiance in you and vote for you. So I want you to think with this in mind, whoever's resolution this is, and I, and last night, Ms. Waterman, thank you too, because I heard some of your comments, that you are in support of the public, because at the end of the day, I say this at all of these meetings, it's about us. It's about us. We vote for you guys to put forth legislation, to gain trust and interest in you, don't take away from the public, really take it into consideration that we come here to these meetings, and it's basically our meeting. It's our meeting, you guys have a caucus, which is wonderful, I'm fighting hard for that in Hoboken. So at the caucus, you guys can solve what you're gonna talk about the next day, but when we come here, I mean, I don't know how this is gonna work with the three-minute, five-minute, whatever, but I have seen you take it into consideration where some people go a little over their time, but it could become hectic, because then when the members of the council, like what you just did with that ordinance that was already voted on and passed, then they grandstand and want to talk, do they have a time limit? That's not fair to us. So all of these type of things should be taken into consideration, and we're definitely keeping in mind that the meeting is for members of the public, try to accommodate the public as much as you can, the same way when you knock on our doors and ask for our votes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
This is still a public hearing on this ordinance, and I see Jean Daly.
Hi, good evening, Jean Daly again. I, first, something about this ordinance, I noticed it said it was sponsored by Ms. Waterman's...
Yes, it is.
Pardon me?
Yes.
According to, again, Jersey City Municipal Rules, a council person themselves has to initiate any ordinance resolution or anything that's voted upon. So I feel there's a legal discrepancy here, and therefore, this ordinance is completely in violation of municipal rules that were set for you guys, and you should know by heart. So I want that on the public record, that this is an illegal ordinance, it's being sponsored illegally, does not comport with the rules for this municipal council. I'd also like to address what harm, you have to show harm typically to instigate change. What harm does it to you to sit and listen to us for five minutes? How are you harmed? The only time you get masses of people coming here is when we get thrown a sucker punch by City Hall. We get thrown a sucker punch, something comes out of nowhere, and then we gotta scramble and come back here and fight, because Jersey City residents do not like being sucker punched, they don't like being kept out in the dark, they want to know what's going on in their community, and because lack of transparency or process or procedure or speaking to communities with, you have not solicited our feedback, so therefore, we get knocked sideways and come out here to fight. We're fighting for our rights, because I just don't represent me. I'm not just Jean here boring you to death like I do, but I represent other people, for example, the elderly people in my building. They can't come here and speak. The kids, like in my son's school, who's gonna come and speak to, those kids gonna come up here and speak and be considered? No. There are couples that I know have kids, they can't afford babysitters to come here, so I speak with them, whatever, and they, they ask me, okay, do you have a chance, can you bring this up, or can you bring that up? So the point is, why are you stifling our voices? And to what end? Because I, like I said, represent more than just me. And I also feel, and I, it seems, that I find that I am presenting information to you oftentimes that you are not aware of yourselves. This is a very important, important step, because you don't have the time, or you're not allotted the time, to do this research yourself, and because the ordinance is not properly channeled through the city council, because then the city council member has to put their name on it, they have to be held accountable for what they proffer, and they have to be accountable for the accuracy of this information. So therefore, since that, that step doesn't happen, we in the public are stuck doing that job. And I could probably ask you about several things that I've found on petitions and communications and letters, that you guys have no idea occurred. And yet you voted on them, you passed them, or you just simply ignored them. And that's why the public is so important. If we had the proper procedures in place, maybe we wouldn't need this. The point is, nobody wants to be here. I don't want to be here, nobody wants to be here.
Speak on the time, that's, that's what this is about.
I'm speaking on it, but we are here for a reason. It's not because we think we're wasting time, because we care. We're not getting paid to sit here for hours, as they call them, the punishment pews, waiting for our name to be called. We sit here because we care, and we care desperately. And the fact is, one voice, like myself, I represent...